We have a call to order, the meeting of the Emeryville Planning Commission for June 28th. Could we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Guerrero?
Here.
Commissioner Kang?
Here.
Commissioner Keller?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson has an excused absence this evening. Vice Chair Barrera?
Here.
Chair Donaldson?
Here.
We have a quorum of five commissioners present.
Yeah, I would like to start the meeting by saying that Item 7.3, the Shell Moundway General Plan Amendment is going to be, is being continued to a future meeting. The next item on our agenda is public comment for any items that are not on the agenda. So if there was a comment on the general plan amendment, you could make it now.
Oh, that was my, I had a comment on that. I'll do it back up.
It's going to come up back up at a subsequent meeting. So if you want to say something now, you can say it before we have any, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Chee Timmons, and I'm here representing the thousands of union plumbers, sheet metal workers, electricians, and sprinkler fitters who live in Alameda County, including many members that live here in Emeryville. We have two concerns that we want to bring to your attention at this study session. First, we believe in the integrity of the project's approval process as it relates to CEQA as something that must be protected. Unfortunately, the letter that we provided you raises significant questions if CEQA is being applied correctly on this project. We believe it is not. The earlier discussion of the general plan amendment should have been considered as part of the package of approvals needed for this project. Piecemealing of the various approvals needed for this project is not a responsible approach. Secondly, we ask that you consider some additional community benefits as part of the approvals for this project. We understand that Emeryville has had to make some challenging trade-offs as it has increased land use density and to help address the housing crisis. Your policy seeking additional benefits from a project in exchange for higher density should be duplicated by other cities in the region. But as good as this policy is, there's a failing in the policy that has harmed construction workers throughout the region and lessened the opportunity for youth, women, and at-risk workers to have a middle-class career in the trades. Much of the construction workforce that has built the recent projects in Emeryville come from outside the region, are paid less than the area standard wage, and very few are enrolled in state apprenticeship programs. This development model harms yours and surrounding communities in many ways. First tens of millions in construction wages are not being recirculated within the local economy. These monies are not being used at the community's local businesses. Second, dozens of lost opportunities for the youth and residents in this community occur since the contractors on these projects don't utilize workers enrolled in state-approved apprenticeship programs, nor do they create a pathway into those apprenticeship programs. Finally, since these workers are paid as much as 50% less than the area's standard and receive few benefits, their families often have to depend on state and federal programs to sustain themselves. We would ask that you, as the developer, include commitments to hire local workers, have an appropriate ratio of apprentices on the project, and that they pay families supporting wages. Thank you.
Thank you. We will be having the study session on the 5850 Shell Moundway project later in the evening, but the general plan amendment is something that's been continued. Okay, we have the approval of action minutes. We have two sets of minutes, one from the regular meeting on Thursday, April 26th, and I have to abstain from that because I was absent. Are there any additions or corrections?
I'd move approval of both.
Second. Was that a motion to approve both sets of minutes?
Yes.
All right.
Charlie, does it have to be, does it have to be one or the other? Because I want to abstain from the May one, and Gail wants to abstain.
Okay, then we could do it one at a time.
I think we should do them one at a time.
Okay, that's fine.
So my motion would be for the Thursday, April 26th meeting.
And Commissioner Guerrero is seconded?
Second.
Is that without objection? Then that would be, let's see.
Without objection and with my abstention.
With, yes. So the other four of you were there. So that'd be four, zero with Commissioner, I mean with Chair Donaldson abstaining.
Chair Donaldson, do you have to abstain from the second one?
No, I was there.
Okay, good. So I'll move approval of the May 17th minutes.
Second.
Okay, and on this one, Commissioner Kang would need to abstain. So is that without exception also?
Yes.
So four ayes, and Commissioner Kang abstained.
Great, okay. Next on the agenda is the Community Development Director's Report. Charlie?
Thank you. I have a lot to report on tonight because your May meeting, as you know, was canceled, and so I have not yet reported to you on the city council's May actions. So I have four council meetings to report on tonight, the two in May and the two in June. I'll try to make it quick. On May 1st, the mayor, on behalf of the city council, issued a proclamation proclaiming May as Small Business Month in the city of Emeryville, and then presented a series of proclamations to several notable Emeryville small businesses. The mayor also, on behalf of the council, issued a proclamation recognizing the week of May 10th to May 20th as the 22nd Annual East Bay Affordable Housing Week. The city council denied a noise waiver request from Avalon Bay Communities for construction work on most Saturdays from May 18th, uh, May 2018 to May 2019 at Parcel C2 and Parcel D of the Public Market Project. The council affirmed the recommendation of the Economic Development Advisory Committee and awarded $200,000 in facade grants to five applicants. And following my director's report on actions taken by the commission at your April 26th meeting, the council discussed whether to appeal to themselves your approval of the tannium high-rise identification signs at 2100 Powell Street, but ultimately, they decided not to do that. On May 15th, council approved a noise waiver request for morning and evening work inside the Cliff Bar offices on 65th Street and for one Saturday of outside work to facilitate a crane pick to install rooftop equipment. And the council adopted an updated homeless strategy and approved a total of $305,000 for funding of homeless services, which is a substantial increase over previous years. On June 5th, the council hosted a special celebration of LGBT Pride Month, including several performances and presentations, a series of proclamations recognizing several notable Emeryville LGBT community members, and raising the pride flag in front of City Hall. And the council approved an annual cabaret permit for live performances at Bay Street. On June 19th, the council held a study session on the draft parking management plan, which went on for three and a half hours and included over 20 public speakers. The council gave direction on all of the issues that were addressed in the plan, and staff is now working on finalizing the plan based on the council's direction with the intent of bringing it back to the council for adoption on July 24th. The council approved an amendment to the public parking lease between the city and Wareham to address the operation of the public parking garage in the Emery Station West Transit Center Building, which is expected to open this fall. They approved an annual cabaret permit for live performances at the Bank Club Cafe. And the council approved a two-year contract for fire services with the Alameda County Fire Department. Notably, this contract designates the city's chief building official as the city's fire code official, meaning that he will have final authority over interpretation of the fire code upon the advice of the county fire marshal. The city attorney renewed, city, the city council renewed city attorney Michael Geena's contract for two years, which is good news for all of us, especially for Andrea. The council presented city manager Carolyn Lair with a proclamation in appreciation of her three years of service to the city of Emeryville upon the occasion of her retirement at the end of this month. The council also approved a three-month contract with James N. Holgerson, who will serve as our interim city manager through the end of September. The council expects to have a new permanent city manager in place by the beginning of October. And of course, we will let you know who that is when he or she is appointed. In other matters, as you know, there are three seats on the commission that are up for appointment this year. Commissioner Thompson has applied for reappointment to a three-year term. Former Commissioner Banta's vacant seat, which also is to expire on June 30th of this year, is up for appointment of a three-year term. And Commissioners Kang's seat, as you know, Commissioner Kang has resigned, and this will be his last meeting, and his term expires actually next year, June 30th of 2019. So that seat is up for appointment of a one-year term. The city council is scheduled to make the appointments at a special meeting starting at 5:00 PM on July 10th, following the mayor's State of the City address. And applications that have been received are from Commissioner Thompson, of course, Jonathan Hidalgo, and Tito Young. Finally, we have no items that will be ready to be considered at the July 26th Planning Commission meeting, but we have several that will be ready for the August 23rd meeting. Therefore, we propose to cancel the July meeting, and the swearing-in of the new commissioners and election of the chair and vice chair for the coming year would then take place at the August meeting. I've discussed this with the chair and vice chair, who have concurred, and I am now seeking the concurrence of the rest of the commission and cancellation of the July meeting. Any objections to that?
Are there any objections?
I have a question. Since we just deferred something tonight, can't that be put on that agenda?
Uh, we probably won't be ready for it at that point, and it's not time-sensitive.
Okay. I'd like to get that going because it has to go through for council approval to be put on. So I think, you know, delaying it farther and farther is just, but that's just my opinion.
Well...
August anyway.
That's true. Yeah, the council doesn't meet in August, so... Right, if we did it in July, we couldn't get it to the council till September anyway, so... No objection to canceling July? All right, that concludes my report, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Any questions for Charlie? Okay. Are there any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications regarding items on tonight's agenda? No? No, me neither. So the first public hearing we have is the Ocean View Town Homes. That's Navarre.
Good evening, Commissioners. I have, uh, I have to set up the presentation, so that'll, that'll take a moment or two. While I do that, I have photocopies of correspondences you received from neighbors regarding this project last month. I have photocopies for you to review for the people in the audience. I've left a couple of copies at the corner of this counter over here. And there's also a materials board for you to review during this time as well. All right, thank you for your patience. So as stated, this is for the review of the Ocean View Town Homes project at 12th Avenue for a conditional use permit and design review proposal to demolish an existing single-family home and replace it with a three-unit residential building. Here's a map of the neighborhood, and the project site is highlighted in red in this slide. So that's what I just stated. My apologies. A single-unit home to be demolished and replaced with three new multi-bedroom town homes. Here's some existing site photos of the existing building and accessory buildings. And here's a rendering of the facade facing Ocean Avenue. Here's the west elevation that's proposed, the east elevation that's proposed, and the rear of the building facing Peabody Lane with the garages. So for project history, on May 26th, the applicant, application was filed originally for four units with a driveway on the east side of the property. In January 2017, there was a planning commission study session, and the feedback at that from both the neighborhood and planning commission was that the project was too large and out of character with the neighborhood. In April 2017, applicant held a community meeting. They'd resigned, redesigned the project to be three units instead of four, and moved the driveway to the west side of the property. And the neighbors at that meeting were generally supportive of the project and found it be better suited to the neighborhood. Staff feedback, however, was that the driveway wasn't feasible, which necessitated relocating the parking to Peabody's side of the property. And then December 2017, Planning Commission Study Session, revised plans included material and design modifications. The driveway from Ocean is removed, all parking access was relocated to Peabody Lane. The building was stepped back from both the Peabody and Ocean sides to reduce the impacts of building bulk, and family-friendly features were added. There was no public comment at that meeting. And the planning commission overall expressed appreciation for the applicant's response to the previous comments, and suggested that materials on the third floor of the building be changed from shingle to board and batten, and requested that there be more landscaping details provided for the project. The project then went to a study session at city council in January. The plans were the same as what was seen by the planning commission at that time, and three people spoke during public comment, raising concerns about demolishing an existing home, losing existing housing and impacts to families with children, and concern about the parking ratios and potential impacts to Peabody Lane. The city council provided comments with concerns about the project massing in regards to it being the RM zone and the context for North Hollis overlay. They had concerns about locating all the parking on Peabody Lane, and said that there wasn't enough landscaping. They were concerned about the location amount of wastements provided, and confirmed that they really wanted to make sure that neighborhood and commission concerns were addressed in any future plans. So since you last saw the plans, applicant revised the plans again to address your feedback. So at the top here, you'll see the previous elevation that was shingle. Your feedback was to please change that to board and batten, which they have done. And then it's a little bit hard to see because it's very small here, but they also revised the landscaping plans, provide more details and more plantings. So the revised plans now include elevations showing full massing in the building from lot line to lot line. This is consistent with RM and NH design guidelines, and it maintains parking along Peabody Lane. This maximizes the landscaping, which was raised as a concern, maintains all on-street parking along Ocean Avenue, and is consistent with the neighborhood design. As all the other properties on this block with, that are between Ocean Avenue and Peabody Lane, they all have garages facing Peabody. So that's a consistent design standard. The landscaping details have been revised, and bike parking is located between the common open space and the proposed trash enclosure to provide a buffer, which also addresses some of the city council concerns about site planning. The waste management cannot be picked up on Peabody Lane, so that has remained on Ocean Avenue. So that remains in the front setback. And as we just spoke about, the planning commission request for third-floor material change has been addressed. So modifications and permits requirements, previously, staff stated that a variance is required for the garage, and there is setback, but after looking at the project again and looking at the zoning code again, the location of the garage and there is setback, does not require a variance. It does require a conditional use permit, as does the trash enclosure in the front setback. So no special findings are required for this, it's just incorporated into the overall findings for the project. So street trees. The project design itself preserves existing street trees. If there was a driveway from Ocean Avenue, it necessitated the removal of at least one of the street trees. So an arborist is requested to go out and assess the street trees for a tree protection plan to make sure that when the curb, gutter, and sidewalk was replaced as part of this project, that the trees could be protected properly. But what the arborist found is that the trees are actually in very poor condition. And so now the project is seeking a tree removal permit, which requires planning commission approval. Staff recommends approval, as well as waiving the cost of the replacement value fee because we're recommending instead that the trees be planted and replaced based on the arborist's recommendation. Tree removal permits do not require city council approval unless appealed. The planning commission approval is contingent upon the city council's approval of the conditional use and design review permit. So here is the front elevation facing Ocean Avenue of existing and proposed. For the general plan, this is an area of stability. The land use classification is medium-density residential, and this is in the North Hollis overlay as previously mentioned. Here is a map of the area of stability. The project site is highlighted with a little red circle in all of these slides. There's a general plan, medium-density residential, and the North Hollis overlay. For the zoning district, it's a medium-density residential. When I spoke before of RM, that's what I was speaking of. And North Hollis overlay does not modify the permitted uses here. For the zoning, the base FAR is .5 up to 1.0 with a bonus, and the proposed is .92. So this does require bonus, however, in the RM district, bonus points are not required. The required findings is it's compatible with the neighborhood, and the design minimizes the appearance of driveways, parking spaces, and garages. Required parking is three spaces, one for each unit, which this project has, and is compatible with the design guidelines, as the least visual impact to Ocean Avenue is to place all of the parking along the Peabody side of the project. Bicycle parking proposed exceeds the requirements by having four short-term bicycle parking racks in the front, as well as space in each garage. For setbacks, the side setback requirements are exceeded. The front setback, the main building meets the requirements, but the trash enclosure, as I mentioned before, does require a conditional use permit because it's located in the front setback. And the rear setback also requires a conditional use permit because of placing the garage in that rear setback. So trash enclosures in the front setback, this is necessary because waste management is not able to provide service to Peabody Lane and necessitates Ocean Avenue pickup. And the trash enclosure will include locks, which addresses neighborhood concerns that were raised about trash security. The neighbors did request that it be a secured enclosure. It also maximizes usable open space by locating it close to the front sidewalk, and Public Works has reviewed the proposed plans for adequate sizing and appropriate location. For garages in the rear setbacks along Peabody Lane, there's nine properties that have, uh, the rear of the property is along Peabody Lane, which is a private road, and the front of the property is along Ocean Avenue, which is a public road. So two of those properties are vacant, and five of the nine properties have garages in the rear setback adjacent to Peabody Lane. One of the nine properties is under construction, and that project did receive a variance to construct a garage and dwelling unit in the setback adjacent to Peabody Lane. So creating parking access via Ocean would be inconsistent with the current development pattern here, and placing the garage in the rear setback is consistent with existing conditions there. And here are some photos of those garages on the rear setbacks. You can see they go right up to Peabody Lane themselves. So for open space, all open space requirements are exceeded for both common and private open space, and landscaping requirement is also exceeded, exceeds the 10% minimum requirement. North Hollis overlay, massing and treatment should be scaled and treated as a way that is compatible with adjacent existing structures. And this is done in this case, and the project's east of the Doyle Street and south of Ocean Avenue need to preserve the predominant fabric of the neighborhood. So here is the Ocean Avenue elevation and context with the adjacent properties. And here is the Peabody Lane elevation and context with the neighboring properties. Here's a zoom in of the Peabody Lane access, showing that there's adequate turning radius to get into each of individual driveways. And parking is highlighted. The automobile parking spaces are in green on the left side by Peabody Lane, and the short-term bicycle parking is, as I stated before, along Ocean Avenue behind the enclosures for trash. There's also hanging bike parking racks proposed for the inside of the garages. So the trash compost and recycling that I mentioned before, this is the front of Ocean Avenue here. There's a pathway to access each unit along the west side of the property, and then between the building and the sidewalk, closest to the sidewalk is the trash enclosure. Then there's two bike racks for a capacity of four bicycle parking spaces, buffering the trash enclosures from the common open space seating area. And here's landscaping plan, showing landscaping on three sides of the project. And the open space plan, there is the common open space that we just discussed. On the other side of the pathway to the front unit is the private open space for the front unit. The middle unit and the rear unit both have roof decks on the second floor, or third floor, rather, and then the unit facing Peabody Lane also has a deck on top of the garage area. Here's the first floor plans, the second floor plans, and the third floor plans. And the applicant was not required to incorporate family-friendly features, but they did go ahead and do that in response to concerns about there being adequate family-friendly housing in Emeryville. And so they've shown how their units do this on each of the floors. So this does require a conditional use permit findings, that proposed use is consistent with the general plan, that the characteristics and design of the proposed use are compatible with the neighborhood and compatible with utilities and emergency response systems, that the proposed use contributes to the general well-being of the community, and proposed use complies with the planning regulations, all of which it does. For development bonus findings for RM, as we talked about it, you don't actually require bonus points in the RM zone, but the project does need to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and scale for materials and street orientation. And the proposed project is designed to minimize appearance of off-street parking facilities by not having any parking located along Ocean Avenue. So for the demolition of residential units, the finding is that applicant will provide at least the same number of dwelling units as a demolished structure, which this does by providing three new residential units, and that replacement structure would feature design quality that is higher, higher than the structure to be demolished, and that is compatible with the character of the neighborhood, which it does. Additionally, the elimination of the residential structure need to be, not be material detrimental to the housing needs or the public interests of the affected neighborhood or city. For major design review findings, the design of the project is consistent with the general plan. It also conforms to the Emeryville Design Guidelines, and it's of a high design quality that's compatible with and will not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood. City council approval is required because of the demolition of the residential structure, and staff recommends the planning commission recommend approval to city council, subject to the conditions of approval of the project. And the arborist is also here, as well as the applicant.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Navarre?
Good job.
If I could just briefly append to that recommendation, we're also recommending that you approve the tree removal permit, conditional upon the council's subsequent approval of the use permit and design review.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing, so if there is anyone wishing to speak on this, come on up. Yes, Mr. Carpio. You have three minutes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andre Carpio, and I'm the unfortunate victim of the annihilation of my property. It was a very contentious thing, but as everybody knows, as an old man, I'm maybe four years old, there is nothing I can do because I'm outnumbered and outnumbered, and I'm a foreigner. And so as a result, I'm sure you're aware, when I moved here in this country, I came here as an exchange student, graduated, and I had whatever, a bunch of paperwork, something you do, something you get when you sit in school, and at the end you graduate. So anyway, I ended up doing all kind of engineering project, solar car, submarine, stainless steel roof, and all that, and my machine shop. But without that going into this detail here, I, I work, I toy for 50 years to get a house. I didn't irritate the house. I worked for, and still I didn't irritate, I didn't, I did just like a regular working man does. And so when the city violated its own rule and demolished my property, I was surprised. I didn't think that it would happen, but it did happen, and it was too late, and all that, the demolition, all my property, my, all my writing, my law library in French, my law library in, in English, all my technical book in, in German, since I'm bilingual, German, French, and, and also my invention, four US, four European patent and one US patent. So all that has been thrown away, trash, no say, no way to get where it has been dumped. So I did react to that, as I say, as a loser, you know? And my point here is that instead of demolishing the house next door, you know, just transfer the house to my property, so, because you people put me homeless, you know? I mean, I'm not going to challenge that anymore, but it- but it's a matter of fact, I'm homeless. And, I mean, I'm not sleeping on the street yet, but anyway, I'm repeating, you people put me homeless. And it is a turn, they say, oh, my property is very dangerous, she never look at it, she don't know, she just hear, so it's dangerous, dangerous. Anyway, I cannot argue with people who do not know. So, I'm asking that the property, instead of being demolished, these gentlemen there, be transferred into my lot. It's your whole house, but it's still livable because people still live in, and the house has not been declared unsafe, dangerous, like my house was done. The house has not been declared imminent collapse, like my house was done.
Thank you, Mr. Carpio. We've had three minutes, and we understand your point.
So, I'm asking that the house be transferred from that, their property, to my property. I don't think it's a hardship for you, you know? I mean, I don't think you're going to lose anything.
Thank you.
Okay, bye.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this project? Public hearing is closed. Does the applicant wish to say anything, make a presentation?
Sure, I can just briefly highlight a few details. Navar pretty much covered everything I was going to say, as she usually does.
That's why I skipped you in the first place. Sorry about that.
No, it's okay. I just wanted to highlight a few details from our last meeting together that I think got lost in the presentation because we had other reviews, and then we had a missed meeting. But I wanted to say that we also picked up a fenestration change that was requested to remove all the gridded divided lights from the windows. Those appear on the A4 series. We talked about redesigning of the landscape area, but we did a redesign of A2.1, which is the landscape plan, to create a buffer between the public and private open space and make sure that the ramp entry for the front unit, which is a family-friendly housing unit, works. So, that was part of our redesign as well. Navar briefly discussed the change of cladding on the east roof deck facade to board and bat. That was on A4.1. And we also included a vicinity study, which Navar summarized quite well, regarding the nature and the precedent of Peabody Lane, which I think was possibly unclear in our last review. And then, lastly, as Andre just spoke, the council was concerned about the demolition of an existing, of the existing dwelling unit. That came up quite a bit at our last review, and as Andre spoke to it, he has requested that the owners discuss with him the possibility of relocating the dwelling unit onto his property. So, they are having that conversation outside of our conditions of approval and this application, but I did want to speak to that because that was a public concern at our last meeting. Thank you.
Any questions of the applicant?
I've got a question.
You would have to come up and speak, please. The public hearing has been closed. I will re, what I would do is, we also have the tree removal permit, and I would like to ask the arborist to come and talk, speak to that, and then I'll reopen the public hearing so that you have a chance to speak. Thank you. So, are there any questions for the applicant from here? No? Okay. If you could come up, Ms. Bachelder, and let us know your opinion on the trees, because I noticed that in the report, that was at a time that the trees hadn't leafed out, and they've changed since then. I have some pictures, and I just have some questions about the raywood ashes and the way that they're deteriorating.
Sure. Yeah, the raywood ash, I actually went to look at them today, and they're still in poor condition. One is actually, the whole top is dead, and it's sprouting from the middle. The other one is very sparse foliage. This tree was introduced about 30 years ago, 20 or 30 years ago, as the next great street tree, but it is pretty susceptible to a fungal pathogen called Bactriosphera when its roots are either cut or when it runs out of root space. And so, it's not a very ideal street tree, because oftentimes we have to do pavement replacement and root cutting, you know, and there's not a lot of soil volume for traditional ways of, the trees have traditionally been planted. So, that's the reason why they are declining. I feel that the city has some pretty kind of proactive ways of planting trees. There's a soil volume requirement for small, medium, and large trees, and we also spec out a six-inch layer of clean crushed rock in between the structural soil or soil and pavement. Roots don't grow in that medium because there's no water or nutrient holding capacity, and so, there's not the pavement uplift. And this is based on a 10-year experiment that was published in the Western, or the Journal of Abor Culture a few years back, so. Questions?
So, if there is work done on the sidewalk, you feel that they'll decline further?
Absolutely.
Is there any kind of pruning that can be done to mitigate that?
Well, you could prune off the dead areas, but I think with the amount of root disturbance that the trees will have to encounter with the sidewalk replacement, and there's going to be more decline. So, there's not, there's not anything we can do about this situation with the fungal pathogen, except for to get the trees healthy, but in order to do that, you need a good root environment, and right now, there's not one.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Is there a recommended tree you're suggesting that we replace these with?
That would depend on the amount of soil volume that is available for the trees. I haven't looked yet. And also, I didn't notice if there were high-voltage power lines.
There are power lines.
So, we have to choose a tree that's under 30 feet. I can come up with some recommendations, especially if we have an idea about the amenities. Do we want an evergreen tree, a fall, deciduous tree that has fall color? It would probably be a medium to small-sized tree, which medium trees require about, I think it's 700 cubic feet of rootable soil, and the small trees are 500 cubic feet. So, when we have that, those figures, we can, we can come up with some ideas.
So, in your knowledge and repertoire of trees, if we were to replace these trees in a number of years, say, three to five years, are we going to have trees that you feel are as substantial in filling that physical environment as what we have now?
Three to five years. I mean, what we say is it takes about 20 years for a tree to start to give back everything that it was, all the resources that went into planting it. But we know that if you provide a soil volume where the roots are able to really get out in the soil, that root growth and shoot growth are directly related. So, if roots are able to grow very fast, and oftentimes, Emeryville specifies structural soil, which is a mixture of crushed rock and soil, in three parts rock to one part soil, and what that, under pavement. And what that does is offer the structural support for the pavement, but there's a lot of oxygen and gas exchange in the rooting environment, and roots really require oxygen in order to do anything, in order to uptake any molecule of water or nutrient, oxygen needs to be available. So, with the structural soil, there is the, there is the oxygen availability, and still you get the compressive support and the soil volume. So, if you provide a soil volume for trees to reach a mature size, that's why Emeryville does have the soil volume requirements, they actually will get to be mature-sized trees and grow fast and be around for a long time. You know, I think what happens in the past, we didn't know how to plant trees. I mean, we were planting trees too deep at one point because we thought, like, if we plant them deeper, the roots are going to stay down, but that's not understanding about how roots work. So, now we have the information, and Emeryville is doing, I believe, a very good job to plant trees correctly.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay. Because there was another question, I'm going to reopen the public hearing since we had more information, so if you want to come up and speak, you have three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Barbara Bloodwalker. I'm the trustee of the property at 1274 Ocean Avenue. I live at Watergate, but my daughter lives in the cottage, and my grandson inhabits the studio apartment in the back. And we were wondering, will there be a time when the, when the building starts, if we'll have time to comment or have concerns about what's happening? The property is very close together. There isn't much between the two. We just want to make sure that our, that we have access to our property for repairs and all of that, so we're not sure until the building starts. I don't have any questions right now because nothing has started, but I'm wondering, will there be a time when we will have the opportunity to make comments if there's something that needs to be changed or whatever?
Charlie, do you, can you respond to that?
What is your property again?
1274, we're the house, the property next door.
To the west.
Yeah. There's a studio apartment in the back, and there's a cottage in front.
Well, the applicant.
And the properties are very close together.
Right. Normally, you would not have legal access to the 1270 Ocean Avenue property.
I'm not talking about theirs, I'm talking about ours.
Right, and they, in their construction, they should not be encroaching onto your property. They're not allowed to do that. So, any access that you currently have that is on your own property should continue.
Okay. Now, there's a fence that we put, well, the previous owners, there's a fence that attaches to the studio apartment, and that fence was put there, and it is on our property and theirs. So, I want to make sure that when they take that fence down, and it was put there because of dogs. They had a dog, we had a dog, so on the studio, the fence is attached. So, we just wanted to make sure that, you know, that we still have the small bit of property between the two, it's not very much, as they know.
Well, you'd have to work that out with the adjacent property owner.
Well, I'm just saying, do we, will we have the opportunity, if there becomes a problem, to come back to the council?
Well, not really. The Planning Commission tonight is making a recommendation to the City Council. The City Council will make the ultimate decision. If, assuming the City Council approves this project, there is no further public hearing process beyond that, but you certainly have the opportunity to work with the next-door neighbor on it to resolve any mutual issues you may have with them.
I'm not, well, they've been very supportive. I'm not, you know, I'm not anticipating. I just want to make sure that we will have the opportunity to talk to somebody.
Well, if you have concerns, you can always call the city, and we'll, you know, we'll help you resolve your concerns.
They've been very supportive, so I'm not.
You either have to come.
Yeah. Well, per our survey, too, the fence that was being discussed is solely on your property, so we would have no reason to.
So, you wouldn't touch it.
Touch the adjacent buildings or the fence. But of course, you know, you have my email and phone number, so you can always call, you can always reach out to me and call me, too, if there's any questions or anything needs to happen.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing? Mr. Carpio has already spoken, so we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Well, I want to express my appreciation to the design team and the owners, and you guys have done a great job of, of working with a difficult parcel, and a lot of requests from the commission and the City Council. I'm very happy with the project. I don't have any concerns about the lot lines, and I think the garage along, I go by Peabody Lane quite often, and I think those garages are going to enhance that lane more than anything. I appreciate the enclosures of the trash. I look around at houses, and I just see people that have their garbage cans right in front of their house, and I think, God does not bother them. So, seeing that these are going to be in a permanent place, they'll be enclosed, the trash company can get to them easily. I like this design considering the constraints that your lot has, so I'm very happy with that. And just, I want to mention the trees. As everyone knows, they're doing a lot of work in my neighborhood at the public market, and they've planted a lot of trees, some at Emmy Apartments were planted several years ago, some new ones across the way, and where the park is going to be, there are some new ones. And I was just noticing the other day that the newer trees are almost as big as the trees that are three years old. And I'm noticing that also on Park Avenue, where we have planted the London Plains in proper soil. So, I'm thinking that we're, losing a mature, sick tree is unfortunate, but I think what we're doing now with engineered soils and stuff, and why I asked about, I'm seeing newer trees far exceeding existing trees in health, in their robustness, and just overall, they're just better trees altogether. So, I think in the, in the immediate future, we lose some mature trees, but I think in a very short period of time, in my experience, I've been in town 17 years, I see, you know, when we've done trees, before we knew what to do, and now we've done it, what we do knew, and I think that we've done a lot better work, and the trees are healthier. I look at the London Plains at Rich Robin's original Emery Station, and those are not doing very well. They're like the ones the park had, but the ones along Park Avenue are really flourishing. So, I'm seeing evidence that we're doing a better job at planting new trees, so I would support the removal of the old trees, and just the fact that I know we're going to get better trees in a few years' time. So, my, and I'm really happy to see the letters from the neighborhood in support. I think everyone's done enough work, and I'm really glad that the neighborhood does see that this is a benefit to the neighborhood, so kudos to everyone.
All right. I'm in full support of moving forward with this project. I think that it's apparent that you've worked well with the neighbors and done your process to get feedback from them, and then not only hear from them, but also make changes to the design based off of that feedback. So, thank you for that. The addition to landscaping looks great, the addition of a family-friendly unit, and I, I'm, thank you. Yeah, great job.
Any other comments?
Sure. I would also like to express my appreciation. The design is very lovely, and I think it's much more fitting now, and, you know, we started off this project with a handful of angry neighbors, and we're ending it with a handful of supportive neighbors, so that's a sign that this is, you know, this went in the right direction. And I also support the tree removal if we're going to get a new tree that's going to be planted with better techniques, so that seems like a win for us. And I just want to comment on, I think Mr. Carpio's idea is very interesting, but, you know, I kind of just want to put it on the record that that's outside of our purview, right, Charlie, to require or condition something like that, because there's no nexus for us to do something like that. So, you know, I appreciate if the property owners and Mr. Carpio, you know, want to communicate about this separately, but it's outside of what we can do as a commission, because it's not really connected to the project, Mr. Carpio. But I appreciate your interesting idea and coming up and talking to us about it, so thank you.
I won't add much more. I'm also fully supportive of the project. Other than the tangible things that my colleagues on the dais have expressed in terms of why this is a great project moving forward, just want to underline, underscore, just procedurally, the attitude in which you brought forth this project. You were responsive to the community. It shows you really listened and wanted to be part of this community and develop this project, and in that, the way of doing, going about things, I think you provide an example of what can be done through that kind of process. So, well done, not just tangibly, but also in terms of how you work with the community and the city.
I also appreciate the modifications that you've made and the reduction in the bulk. I think it works much better. I think it will provide needed housing and that it fits in the neighborhood well. I hate to see trees come down at all, but I think that we'll end up with better trees, so I support that. So, I would move approval of the project and approval of the tree removal permit with conditional, you know, based on the.
Contingent, on council approval of the project.
Yeah, that one.
I would happily second that motion.
All right. On the motion, Commissioner Guerrero.
Aye.
Commissioner Kang.
Aye.
Commissioner Keller.
Aye.
Vice Chair Barrera.
Aye.
And Chair Donaldson.
Aye.
Five ayes. We will forward your recommendation of approval to the City Council, who are tentatively scheduled to hear it on July 24th.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the Sherman Williams, Sherwin-Williams surface parking lot, and I have to recuse myself because my company works for the Lennar Company sometimes.
Charlie, we still have quorum, right?
Yes, we need four. We have four.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Are we ready to begin the second item?
Yes, okay.
So, this is Sherwin-Williams. We are back to Sherwin-Williams again, but this is only the second last. You will see after this, one more item come through. And you have participated in a long, long entitlement process, and these are the various entitlements that were given to this project. What we are here for is, what is missing in terms of the entitlement that is yet to come, is the final development plan for the existing building. If you recall, that is to be repurposed and be used as an office building. So, Lennar is in the process of finding a developer and an operator for the building that is approved for the office use, and as you may know, that there is no parking within this building, and the parking needs for that use will be accommodated in the new garage building. As the existing building only requires tenant improvements and that the construction of the pass-through, it is anticipated that it will be ready for occupancy before the garage building is completed. So, in order to mitigate this possibility, the applicant is requesting to build a temporary surface parking lot for the future tenants of Building 131, which is what the existing building goes by. And this possibility was anticipated at the time that the commission considered the Westing Tentative map, and is memorialized in the condition of approval of that map. And the timeline for completion of the garage building is February 2021, with the construction beginning in early 2019. The FTP for the existing building is anticipated to come sometime in the fall of this year, and with the improvements taking place for about a year or so. So, the surface parking lot will be needed for a little over a year, between the time the existing building is ready and between the time the new garage building is ready with the parking for the office employees. We are recommending that the use permit for this surface parking lot be valid for three years from approval, which is today, and this, what will this do is allow an additional three months beyond the estimated completion date of the parking structure in Building B2. So, if you remember, this is the entitled PUD plan, this is the existing building, and parcel B2 is the one which will accommodate the parking for the office use. So, what they are proposing during, in the meantime, for the interim process is to develop a temporary parking, surface parking lot. It's about 140 space parking lot, roughly an acre, and each space is 18 feet by eight and a half, and the drive to the two drive aisles are 24 feet, and the, these all meet the requirements of our code. And the yellow line that you see is the path of travel after folks park their park and park their cars and go to Building B1 right here. So, in order to approve this, certain findings need to be made. We believe that this can be made, because it is pretty much impossible to provide parking inside the building that is going to be used for office use, and this is an interim condition, and a parking garage will be built. The parking lots, the configuration meets the planning regulations, and that in terms of the design guidelines, it's more, the existing garage do, does meet the Emeryville Design Guidelines. These are further articulated in the resolution that is attached to your staff report, and with that, our recommendation is that you approve this use permit subject to conditions of approval attached to the staff report by adopting the attached resolution. If there are any questions, I would be happy to answer. And just one little note, 140 spaces is about the amount that they would need for the amount of office space, so the, the requirement would be 117 to 191 parking spaces, and they're providing something right in between, so that is, it is appropriate for the use that they're doing. So, if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer. The applicant, Kevin Ma, is also here, if you have any questions from him.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Hi, Maru. My question relates to the, the use of the parking lot, and how many, at full capacity, is, is it anticipated to be, like, used by all employees in full every day?
Well, it depends on how quickly the building itself is occupied. They're preparing, that, they're assuming that the entire building will be occupied at first month, and that would trigger the amount of parking that they are providing. So, even at full capacity, the parking that they are providing will meet the parking needs. Now, whether it will be, so in theory, yeah, if the whole building is occupied, then the parking lot will be occupied five days a week.
Got it. And, and has there been any effort to incentivize sustainable modes of transportation for people that are using this parking lot, possibly carpooling, biking, or transit?
This, we would do that, address that at the time when the FTP is being processed, and there is a larger TDM plan for the entire project, so that continues to apply. This is more of an interim situation.
Understood.
Yep.
Thank you.
I did have, and I don't know if this question is appropriate for, for you or not, but we're doing a temporary parking, that there's going to be asphalt over eventually a park. So, what I'm wondering is, is the materials we're using going to be recyclable?
We are hoping to use something like a decomposed granite rather than an asphalt.
Oh, okay.
Just because of that precise reason.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if, if you have a preference for asphalt, then we can consider that, but both the applicant and staff are looking towards, you know, not so much asphalt.
Good. Yeah, that'd be, I don't know about decomposed granite, because I see that on bike paths, and it's pretty messed up, so I don't think-
Or, or something that is, you know, more solid and more firm, so there's not too much dust going on either, so-
And even if we do use asphalt, I thought there was some process that we can recycle it, so I just want to make sure that we don't contaminate the soil where our park is going to be.
Right.
And that we do something that is not totally just a waste when we tear it up and build a park.
I believe all the parties are concerned about that in terms, we know that this is going to be our, you know, signature park, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Any questions? Oh, yes, your question, okay. Maru, where is the entrance going to be for the parking lot?
So, it is anticipated that the entrance would be right here.
Okay.
That's the pedestrian entrance, right?
Oh, that's the pedestrian, I can-
It's off Hubbard Street.
It's off Hubbard Street. Is it here? Yeah, yeah.
Hi, Kevin. Good evening, everybody. Yeah, so I think the, the way it would be, so this new Hubbard Street portion would be into, like, call it to this area, so the vehicles would pull in right here and then park, and then they would, and then this would be the general kind of walking path, kind of longest walking path to get to Building 131.
Okay, great. That was my only question. Okay, does the applicant have anything else to say?
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to add a, just a couple more details to what Maru had discussed earlier, and really-
Kevin, lift your microphone.
Oh, yeah, sorry. There you go. Well, good evening, everybody. For people who don't know me in the audience, Kevin Ma with Lennar. You guys thought you were done with me, but I'm still coming back. I can't get enough. And so, on this item tonight, and just to kind of help frame the discussion, is that, so, the, the current plan, so this, what Maru has talked about tonight is kind of a fallback strategy, in that we are ideally, when the time comes, when Building 131 would need, would be open for business, and they would have workers that would need parking, ideally, we would like to be using this existing parking lot, the Novartis lot, and so that's been our primary goal of securing a temporary lease on this parking lot. But the reason why we have to come back for this, this fallback plan with the one that Maru showed us, there's a couple of things that are in play. As you guys know, right now, Emery Go Round is using it for their staging, for their shuttles, and then so, talking with them, we're not exactly sure how long they're going to need it. They think it's going to be about a year or so, which we don't think it's going to quite overlap, but we just don't know, you know, because there's, there's a lot of influx and find, and having them find their permanent location. And then, so that in combination with, Novartis is actually actively selling, marketing this parking lot with another one and some other buildings right now for redevelopment, potential purchase and redevelopment by another developer, office developer. And so, seeing how that process plays out, how the timing works, and the discussions there, those are kind of the two balls in the air that we just haven't, that we can't nail down at this time to secure this. And so, that's why we approached the city and asked them to, to come up with this temporary parking lot concept, and really, the main goal of the orientation, because, you know, some people had asked a question of, oh, wait a minute, let me go back to that parking lot plan for you guys. So, and, and so, you know, some of the, one of the questions that came up was like, hey, why can't you, could you ever turn this parking lot and have it be built on your own property, right? And so, that, and the reason why we're not doing that is because of our construction sequencing, is that by the time, you know, because I, I think I mentioned in the prior study sessions or hearings with you guys, that our goal is to basically start with Building B1, B2, move concurrently to D, C, build the park, and then get out. And then, so when we looked at the timing of putting this temporary parking rotated, call it 90 degrees, or what is it? Yeah, that's 90 degrees, onto Building C, that basically, we would not be able to start this building in that same sequence and, and get out in an efficient manner. And basically, what happened, what would happen is that there would be like a six-to-eight month delay in the construction schedule, and ultimately, you know, that's not good for, for our construction purposes, but it's also bad for the community as well, just to have that prolonged construction happening. And so, that's why we've been working with staff on this concept here as more of a fallback. And so, to that point, we've actually talked about this with the Park Avenue Residence Committee. I've, I've kind of walked through all the logistics with them. They're generally supportive of it, they understand kind of the benefits of, of doing this, and the only thing they really asked for was that if we do do this, in the event that we have to kind of go to this fallback plan, that we would just put in, there's eventually going to be like a four-way stop put in here at Hubbard and Sherwin, and so they just asked for that to be put in early so that the, the traffic control and the, and the traffic calming could be better handled as these cars start coming in. So, other than that, I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of color and ask, or available for any questions.
Thanks for that information.
And that's very, that's very helpful, very information on, it's nice to know this is a backup to the Rifkin site.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of a no-brainer, I think, to, to go get this one, it's just that there's so many question marks.
But isn't the Emery Go Round only using part of the Rifkin site? Isn't there like a third of it still available?
Yeah, so talking with them, there's about 50 stalls or so that they're not using, but I think if it came down to it, and if we started having the overlap and Novartis still was willing to, you know, talk to us about leasing that.
Yeah.
I think we could work with them to maybe try to tighten up, or-
Well, you could almost even phase it in, because your building won't occupy 100% unless you're really lucky to get one tenant.
Right, and so that's-
But otherwise, you could phase in 50, then as Emery Go Round goes out, then you could take over more of that lot.
Right, exactly. And so, that's a, that's another option, because we just don't know, like Maru mentioned, this is kind of worst case, like, hey, the eventual buyer and redeveloper of Building 131 finds a single tenant that can occupy 70,000 square feet all day one, which, you know, would be great if they could, but like you said, it, it may go in phases where it's smaller.
Right.
And so, you could be a phased approach, so I think there's a lot of different variations, but we're just kind of preparing kind of for the, the worst case, and then hoping that we can find a, a much easier solution for everybody.
Well, you sold me on it when you didn't want to delay the project by six to eight months.
Right, I don't think anybody wants to.
I am so sick of construction.
Yeah, wants us out there, you know, swinging hammers for, for much longer than we need to.
Exactly. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Nope, nope. Okay, so I will open this up to public comments, so if anybody wishes to speak on this item, please approach the microphone. Nope. Okay, seeing none, I will close it. And now to the commissioners. Anybody wish to start us off?
Welcome back, Mr. Ma. Feel like I'm talking to Dick Clark here, just keeps coming back. Thanks for presenting this in detail, thanks to Maru as well, and given that we don't have any members of the park committee here to give us any more detail, it's, it's pretty clear that you probably got to get in their favor anyway, so thanks for the heads up.
Yep, I don't have any reservations with this. I think it's great planning in terms of having a fallback plan, and, yeah, I'd support this.
I don't have any comments.
I also don't have any comments.
Then I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Second. Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Guerrero.
Aye.
Commissioner Kang.
Aye.
Commissioner Keller.
Aye.
Vice Chair Barrera.
Aye.
Four ayes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the City Council within 15 days.
Well, while our chair comes back, can we take a break?
Sure. She's here, but we'll take it anyway. She's here, but we'll take it anyway.
In a sense, if there are bonus points may be available for the complete construction and design of the 20-foot path. Both staff and the applicant would love to hear any comments that you may have regarding the design concept and use of materials. And would the commission agree with the BPAC's recommendation that the developer built a 10-foot wide path at the time of construction? And then later on, as the city-owned parcel gets developed, a fuller 20-foot path would be constructed? So that concludes my presentation. The applicant does have a presentation. I'm available for questions now and later as well.
Any questions now?
I have a question. Maru, you said, you mentioned that the roof deck was being removed. Are all of the roof decks being removed? Or just the main, the main one that was over the?
The main, yeah, correct.
Over that like rounded area?
So, let me see. So in the earlier, last year's version, they had this right on the top. So that is what I mean by removal of this roof deck.
And then the little, the other smaller roof decks that we see in our packet are still remaining on the other levels? Okay.
Yeah. So, so the plans are in front of you, correct?
Are the roof decks that were just mentioned, are those community roof decks? Are they connected to the units on that level?
We don't have that kind of detail at this time at all. This is very, very preliminary.
Got it.
Would the applicant like to come and give the presentation?
Don't even show us pictures of what you can't build. That is cool.
Let me crank this up, so, there we go. I might have to have Charlie come and help me. So thank you for having us back. Again, my name is Bill Schrader. I own a development company here in the East Bay called the Austin Group. I have a number of people here with me tonight. I'm going to start off with some kind of preliminary information about kind of the process that we've gone through since last September. I'll try not to repeat too much. It's in the, a lot of it's in the staff report. Maru did a great job. But Dave Johnson's going to join me in a few minutes, and he's going to go through the project and how he heard you last time, and what we've heard from the community, and how that's kind of being enveloped in this, in this new design. So I do have Jerry Klein, who owns the property, with me here in the back of the room. That's Jerry. His personal attorney, Kevin Fink, is also here. Just real quick, I just want to make sure you guys know, Jerry ran his business here in this building for 25 years called Innovative Interspaces. He sold the company a couple of years ago, so that's what's generating this opportunity to build this project. So Jerry's, Jerry's been involved here in town for a long time. I would like to thank Maru and Charlie. We've spent quite a bit of time with them. You know, this is our first project here in town, so it always helps to have a good staff that can kind of explain what the community is looking for, and, and kind of the processes and so on. So if you remember when we were here last, we had proposed a similar kind of eight-story podium project. And at the very end of that, I said, "It sure sounds like you guys would like to see us at least investigate a high-rise." So I think it was pretty consistent, every person, yes, 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 all down the line. And so part of what we did, in fact, that screenshot that you see here is not some building in Vancouver, it's actually the building Dave designed as a high-rise. It was 20 stories and 380 units. And we were, we told you at the time, we thought that this would be a stretch, because really what we have, like I've said here, is San Francisco construction costs and East Bay rents. And I was afraid that the economics weren't going to work, but we did, we did design the building. And we actually went, and I wanted to thank Commissioner Keller, and he hosted me over at his home, and with his partner, John, and we looked out on the site, and we talked about how this, this could be a great high-rise site. And I think it's really a question of when, and we don't think it is today. The rents are just not high enough to justify the construction cost. So with that, what we did is we spoke to a half a dozen active high-rise developers in the Bay Area, as well as one in Chicago, and two in Vancouver, Canada. So we actually spoke with a number of folks. And it was pretty universal that the costs are just too high. So that's kind of where it came out. Took quite a while for us to do that. We also did meet with Mayor John as well. We were at Commissioner Keller's house and met former Mayor Scott. And so both of them have kind of seen what we were trying to do, we just couldn't get there. So with that, there's, there's just a few things I want to kind of toss out to you, and then I'm going to bring it, Dave's going to come up, go through the project, and then I'll be available to come back. I think we'll have a lot of questions, and, and we can have kind of a dialogue on, on how this project hopefully will work. There's a few things I want to make sure that you understand what we did in the process. When we were meeting with Charlie, we said, "One of the biggest issues for us is, in order to attract capital to this project, we need to have the right number of parking In particular, what we can't have is substantially less parking spaces than our competitors here in town, or in Oakland, or in Emeryville, or El Cerrito. I mean, we, we compete for these people to come and rent these units. And so what, what we worked out with Charlie says, "You're going to need to go do a parking study and analysis." And in fact, we have done that. I just got the draft on Monday. It says we need somewhere between 277 and 310. The 251 that we showed tonight was there because it worked out with the lifts that we have. So one of the things I want to make sure that the commission understands, and we can talk about it at the end if you'd like, is we look at these buildings as 75 to 100-year buildings. I think over time, we're going to need less and less cars. The question is, when the project's done, how many cars do we need in order to fill the building up and attract the capital? So I want to save that, and we can talk about that a little bit more at the end. Charlie and Maru have not seen that report, because I literally just got it. I will be forwarding it to them probably early next week. And then the second thing is, we need to work with Charlie and Maru to understand a little bit more about the bike path in terms of the land that we're agreeing to give up, whether it's an easement or a sale. And also, in order to get those bonus points for the additional 10 feet, how does that work? Because our construction people will be gone when that building's finally demolished and a new one's built. You know, maybe we figure out a way, we contribute some money, or we, we, we'll figure that out with staff. I just want to make sure you know that we're committed to that bicycle path, but we just got to work out the details with Charlie and staff. With that, Dave Johnson.
Good evening, Commissioners. It's been a while. My name's Dave Johnson with Johnson Lyman Architects. Let me start with the slide for the site plan. Per the input from last time, the site had some strange boundaries in terms of the interaction with the corner. The graphic here, you'll see that what we've done is given up approximately six feet or so of land here, made about a 15-foot-wide frontage on the property on Christie. Did the same thing on Shell Mound. So obviously, yeah, it's a much better presentation for a pedestrian experience to have that expansive sidewalk. So those, that was all good comments. And the frustrating thing for me in the last design was the limitations by this property line. And the fact that we could pop it out, follow more in the urban fashion along, along the sidewalk and along the curb, it definitely helped in terms of presenting a nice landmark to the corner. And that's what we have here. This is a curving facade, a nice dramatic landmark statement for the city. I think will be a handsome addition. The other comments, as Maru and Bill have gone through, we, we added the bike path to the north, the 10 feet, gave it some land there. And also introduced this community plaza that will spin off this gallery area that will be a termination element for the, for all the users of the building to use this area. We also have a lobby there, too, in addition to this main lobby here. So that's kind of the evolution of the plan in terms of its presentation to the street. The design imagery, we wanted to have this factory loft imagery, and obviously with the use of bricks, two-tones bricks, steel sash windows, and forged steel type of elements, all that come into play in terms of the presentation for the building. Stepping the facades was also important in terms of the mass on the street and creating this nice interplay of different forms. Terracing in these areas here, these would-be roof decks, now, at this point, they're for individual units. It's too big to serve for the public. But, but the main thing is what we want to do is have the mass of the building reduced and, and terrace the facade. This is another view, looking more from the south, direct south, showing the terraces. The terrace has also helped in terms of creating a nice interaction with sunlight to the courtyard. That was the other big concern from our design before. Before, our courtyard was more of an afterthought in terms of its presentation, in terms of how the sunlight comes in. So this one's heading due south, this opening is south. It's about a 70-foot opening at the street, the aperture there, and then it tapers down to about 40 feet. But it obviously will have a much better sun visibility in terms of its, you know, use during the day.
Excuse me for interrupting, but I didn't want you to move on, because I think you might have missed vote, because you said the upper terraces are going to be private because they're too big for public?
Right.
Can you clarify that? How does something be too big for public?
You have to have, you have to have two exits.
Okay.
And they have to be far enough apart.
Okay.
So it's something we can look into, but it's going to be a struggle. Now, before, we had the roof deck on the, on the very top.
Right.
And that would have, that had two exits. But in this case, the forms, I think, are just as important as the, the use. It would be nice for the public, for the entire building to use it, but at this point, it's not, that's not the design intent.
Didn't think of the egress thing, but yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, it's, it's tough to deal with that. So the stepping back also occurs at the eighth level. We're stepping back the facade, there'll be a balcony up there for those eight Thor users. So creating a layered effect was kind of the design intent. And, and the two tones of brick, the, the color of the, the balconies with the forged steel, all that, we felt came nicely together. And again, you can see the plaza here, open to the street. And let's see, let's go to this slide here. This slide, again, shows the imagery in terms of the tones of brick, the cable rails, decorative light fixtures, forged steel, the bike racks, some tivoli lighting of some sort in, in the courtyard. All that come together in terms of the design intent and what we're trying to portray. We also did some sun studies. With this opening facing due south, that certainly helps. Summertime, there's no issue in terms of, of the midday, it's obviously, it's just sunlight's coming straight in. We want to show it in the winter months, too, but it, it's getting sunlight, you know, during the noon hours continually throughout the year. So I wanted to at least show that in terms of how we reoriented, reoriented the, that courtyard in terms of its, its exposure to the sun. By the way, all the, all the units we have from our last study session, we looked at the family-friendly units, and we were, you know, we were getting closer, but that hasn't evolved yet, and we'll certainly work with the city on that. But the units are working towards that direction in terms of, you know, all the guidelines you guys have are fantastic, and we're trying to meet those. And again, this shows the, the open court, the opening to the south here for that courtyard, 17,000 square feet. And that courtyard will have all kinds of activities for fire pits, gaming areas, lounge areas, all kinds of activities, activities for the, the users to enjoy. So again, this shot, I think, is our design statement, that we were hoping that you agree will be a nice addition to the area. We didn't get into elevations of every facade yet, because we wanted to get this feedback. But we certainly think it's a, you know, the original design was more of a massing model, and I, I didn't mean to offend anybody with it, but obviously, this design's evolved from that present, last presentation, and I, I think it's a, it's a great start to the, to the process here. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So my, my question is about the view facing south. I'm looking, and I can't find any views from that direction, so I'm really curious what the back looks like.
Oh, oh, the north facade, I haven't.
No.
I haven't. It's going to evolve, yes. And I, I didn't want to attack every side until I knew this direction was okay.
Yeah. I have great, so my comments are not too critical about the design. I, I love the design compared to what we saw last time. My question really pertains to how the design connects with the bike pad path. And so a few of my questions will relate to that.
And the, and the green wall, or the living wall along that facade is certainly a great start to that. But yeah, we're going to have to provide an aesthetic facade for that, for that north side also. So we haven't, I haven't, I don't have any views from that side at this point in time.
Okay. And in the bike, bike pad meeting that we had a couple of weeks back, there's, I learned that there's some space there that's being used for parking along that wall that potentially could be used for units there. Is that correct?
At the ground level?
Mm-hmm.
Want to answer that one?
Commissioner, hopefully, I was making it clear that I thought the logical place for it was actually on the east facade, not the north. But maybe I misspoke that night when I was with the bike committee. So as, listen, as we evolve away from dominant car use here in the Bay Area, and hopefully throughout the country, we're going to end up, and one of the unique things and nice things about using lifts, it gives you the ability to flex your parking, and then, and it's, you're not chewing up all this land, so you can eventually actually take those out and recapture that property. Whether it becomes units, or more bikes, or I don't know what it's going to be, but it's probably not going to be cars for 75 years. So other than that, I'm, I'm not sure how I can answer it.
Okay. I, I see the Greenway designs and love the street-level units. There's some at ME, right across from me. And it really adds an element of activation to the street level that I, I'm not seeing right now on that side of the building. And, and I think that not including that in the early stages and maybe counting on some type of demolition later is, is a loss for the number of, we can increase units, so housing is, is something that'll be increased. And we have to transition at some point and rely less on the cars. And so this could be that statement.
Chair Donaldson?
No questions, I'm sorry. I, I, no, and comments.
May I just respond to that briefly? They're almost at the maximum number of units that would be allowed under the zoning, under the current zoning. I think they're shy by two or three of what the bonus point maximum would be, so they don't have a lot of wiggle room to add a whole lot more units. I'd just like to point one other thing out. If the units are added on the north side, on the ground floor, they could be accessed from the path, which would be a public path. But if they're added on the east side, they would be facing right onto adjacent private property, so they wouldn't really be able to be accessible from the outside.
Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Just trying to figure out where to start here. Give me a second.
Questions, but not comments, yeah.
Right. In terms of the, what you listed here in the commercial space, being restaurant, retail offices, how does that impact the number of parking spaces that you'll need? Another way I want to ask that question is, are you flexible in terms of what commercial tenants would be there if there's an opportunity to scale the number of parking spaces that are needed to open up, say, more park, parking spaces?
Yeah, the, the idea here is that the surface spaces will be for the retail and any other sort of community use, and the lifts will be used for the residents. So all those surface spaces, the 13, the nine, what is that, 22, those are really designed for commercial, because we're going to leave that gate open, because those people that are in those offices and the restaurants don't have any place to park.
I was actually asking the question a different way, is, are you targeting that commercial space to be restaurant or retail?
Right now, in the retail world, there really is only restaurants and service tenants. There isn't anybody else. They're all closing. So it's likely to be restaurant of some kind.
Gotcha. So given just kind of the, the fluid nature of just how this community will be using cars, especially in terms of car ownership, are there any features, or how are you planning for the, the space for parking spaces to also be malleable to that evolution? Are there special features, or somehow that you're drawing the grid lines, or designing lifts so that that space can also evolve with the times?
We haven't gotten that far. But I, I think it's a good question, because I think over time, that's what's going to happen, and it's not just this project, it's pride projects all over the Bay Area, actually.
Gotcha. On a different topic, I'm sorry, you might have addressed this, I just, it just slipped my mind. In terms of the courtyard, is that intended to be a, a public space, or is it just for exclusive use for the residents?
Well, it's, it's just for the residents, but obviously, public can, I mean, it's not accessible to the public, but their visitors can use it.
I see.
But it's, it's for the users of the building.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
I don't have any questions at this point. Okay. This is a study session, though, so if there are members of Publix that have comments that want to come up, we can take comments now. And we did hear your comments the first time, so if you have something to add.
Yeah, yeah, so I just wanted to say, I'm not going to repeat those, because I was speaking on 7.3 and 8.1, but we did provide a, a letter, you know, raising our concerns on this project. So hopefully you can take a look at that.
Yes, I know, they're, they're related, so we.
Good deal, thank you.
Take a look at it. Okay, no other comments. Okay, Commissioner, we have guidance for the applicants here. We, we could go through the questions one by one, or we could go through Commissioners one by one, or how would you like to proceed?
I just have several comments to make, and maybe explanations. There are a couple of things. First of all, I understand the parking, having read Charlie's report on the Nady site and how the Nady site is having trouble getting funding. It's a real issue for them that if you downgrade the parking, and you guys know how I feel about parking and cars, so this isn't just a casual comment. But I think where they are with the parking is going to be sellable to a financing group that it is under what they are wanting out of the traffic report or the parking study. So I think this is a good number, what I'm trying to get at. And the additional reason why is we have to look at the whole perimeter of this building. There is no street parking. There is no parking available outside this building. There is nothing along Christie, there's nothing along Shell Mound, they can't park in the private parking, so the interior parking is all this building has. So in looking at finances, they can't even see, "Well, we can spill over and use the street or something." This is it. Additionally, I think as things evolve, the puzzle lifts along the north side can eventually become housing. We saw Artistry is doing that now, they're converting apartments. So, so having those puzzle lifts there create, that whole north side can be developed into townhouses someday, eventually possibly. So that's the way I'm looking at, at the parking, so I'm, I'm fine with what they're suggesting, because I do want to see them get the financing. If they, if we can reduce any parking, you guys have a very large bike room, maybe this can go in there, but every project we look at, I really push bike lockers, bike lockers, because for those of us who bike every day, I want a guaranteed place to put my bike, I want a place to put my pump, a place to put my helmet. And the thing is, it's a revenue generator. I pay $15 a month for that. I would pay $25 a month for that locker. So, I mean, it's a revenue generator, so it's something I'd like you guys to look at. I totally support lighting on the north side of the building for the path and just for safety in general. We were asked to talk about bonus points, and I can't help but notice that, you know, we're going to do the affordable housing. But we also have the community benefits of a gallery, and that's something that not all these type of places build. So to me, that's a community benefit, and I think that should be eligible for points. The outdoor spaces, the wide sidewalks, the outdoor spaces. And then I think just the high quality of materials. Charlie, is it not part of what we can use for bonus points if a developer uses really high-quality materials?
That's not listed among the eligible items in the planning regulations. There is the catch-all category of the flexible community benefit. They could request that. However, if they did, then the project would automatically require City Council approval.
Okay. Good point. So I, I think there's plenty here that we can eventually look at for, for bonus points, because we just need 49. So I, I think you guys could work on something.
Correction, 99.
Well, we've got 50 coming from the affordable housing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we only need to find 49 more.
Got it.
Um, I do support the daylighting of the corridors. I know where I live, it's really dark in our corridors, we have really long, dark corridors, so anywhere that you can punctuate some light and some views, I think, is really important. The one thing that you guys don't have a lot of control of, so I'm speaking to the city and as well as you working this, but this project still works in isolation with the community and the, and the adjacent properties. And I'd like to see some, some work, maybe you guys pushing the city, maybe working with Mark Stephens, but I'd like, I don't want to see this built in a silo. There's so much opportunity here because the city owns the adjacent parcels. So I think we, we need to start making sure that our developments, because they impact the community as a whole, they need to be built with more blurred, more blurred lines than just a property line. So I'd like to look at that a little bit more. And then your elevator for, on the east side there, that is, serves that side of the building, just as I suggested, it kind of has an opportunity where if you guys built that secure but in glass, so it could interact with the gallery space, I think that could be kind of a neat thing to do. And I think right now, that's all my comments. So then, you know, this is, I know your first one was just to throw some stuff against the wall and see what sticks, and this is far better, and I really appreciate it. But we are going to expect these same materials, and I know the cost was, but they are needing, needing to go on all four sides. And there, there can't be a backside to this building. So other than that, thank you very much. Good job.
Maru, can we see the questions up on the screen, please? So I'll start by saying that the brick, I think that it matches with the rest of the neighborhood, that public market is brick. And so when I was walking around, I really liked that element that was added. It feels really heavy, and so if, if you could break up the design a bit with maybe a different type of element, maybe the, the glass windows could add that. You have windows here, but right across from where I live, there are black mirrored glass windows that complement the brick really nicely. That's on the corner of Christie and 65th, or 64th. Yeah. And so I think that, that the windows could be that element that I'm looking for that's not so heavy, right? And in terms of the, the courtyard, I think that you did a nice job of, of changing the design there, and I appreciate that the lighting was something that you looked at this time in terms of how much light is there, and was glad to see that year-round, that'll be sunny in, in some part of the, the plaza. The, let's see. The initial design that we, I'm going to go back to parking spaces, I'm sorry. That's, that's my voice here. And, and so the initial design that we had, I saw 195 parking spaces, and so now you're increasing that by over 50. And so I'm, I'm still going to push for some type of element that, that interacts with the path in, in the north side. I think that this is an opportunity, and to wait 20, 30 years for that to happen just doesn't seem like a good, good idea for me. I, I want to be able to walk around and really enjoy the full architecture of this building. And it may also be a great way to include some type of design element once the adjacent property is, is developed, so that they can, like neighbors can face each other and, and interact with each other. All right, let's see. Long-term spaces for parking, for bike parking? I, I'd really like us as a city to think about what that means. In my building, it means putting up a bicycle rack for 12 bikes, and that was, that meant that, that requirement. When I hear Commissioner Keller speak about having a safe place for his bike and really being okay investing money in that monthly, I'm in the same boat. I pay $50 a month for a secured storage unit in my building. That's pretty excessive, but I think that we can do better in terms of what long-term parking is. I, I wouldn't feel safe locking up my bike on a, on a rack, but I do feel completely safe in a locker without worrying about anybody stealing the bike or taking elements from it. So I also echo that comment, and would love to see bike lockers. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
So I actually like the other design very much, and I, and I really like this one. I am very happy to see this rounded corner. I think it creates a good, nice statement piece to the building. So I'm kind of just going to run through a list of things that I like about the building, because I think it's pretty well done, and the kinds of things that I hope to continue to see. You know? And the kinds of things that I hope to continue to see, you know, as we get into the more detailed plans. So the reveals on the window, I think, add a really special touch to, you know, having such a big, massive building. The articulation as well. So I really appreciate all the articulation that there is throughout the building. The mix of brick material, I think, works really well as well. And I appreciate what you all did with the parking, pushing it back to have the bike parking up in the front. I'm assuming that the storefront windows are kind of going to wrap around that area as well to continue the same kind of consistency throughout the entire ground floor, which I think would work to activate that space as well. I'm in support of the 10-foot path along the north side. And I actually really appreciated seeing the 15-foot wide sidewalks. I would be interested in having details about the street furniture that you're proposing out there, because in our renderings, we have really nice street furniture. And, you know, I think it's important for us to have renderings that reflect what we're actually going to get. Because it's easy to say, oh, look, it looks great on paper. And then when we get down to the nitty-gritty, sometimes we get a little cheated out of these nice things. And, let's see, what else? Oh, and one comment that I had was considering whether it makes sense to split up the commercial space, because right now you have it all on the Shell Mound way. And in the renderings, there's tables out there that kind of seem like they would be for the restaurants. And so you have a lot of activation on the Shell Mound way. And then some of the more private amenities in the floor plan are on the Christie side. So maybe considering splitting that 7,000 square feet to activate both sides of the street might be appropriate. So I would like you guys to look into that. Let's see. And I guess that's all, those are all my comments for now.
Just like to, I think, underscore a couple of points that Commissioner Keller made in terms of, one, just a word of caution to make sure this is not a silo development. I think that's a great point. So while I think this is a good use of the general space, and I think the general vision is looking like it's going towards the right direction, how it interacts with the community, I just don't see it yet. I'm not sure where that vision is quite yet. So I would encourage you to look into how that could happen. So, for example, just if we're just spitballing here, there's that 17,000-foot courtyard. And it looks really nice in terms of how it's designed. But like how it's designed or how you have it set up in the renderings seems like that could be something that has more, some kind of public use through, not just the residents, but maybe with the commercial tenants that are there. So if you're intending to have restaurants that are there, that might be a very attractive kind of space for the restaurants' patrons to use somehow to activate that space so it doesn't have that siloing effect that Commissioner Keller was referring to. Something that engages the public to have some kind of interaction with the facility, I think, would help try to lessen the siloing effect, but I think that's just a low bar. I would encourage you to have, when it's ready for another study session, just to present more of a vision in terms of silo being the bar that you have to go over. But how is it part of the city? And how is it part of the neighborhood? Secondly, underscoring Commissioner Keller's kind of vision for what is possible. I think that's great in terms of the evolution of the garage and what it could be. But when I asked here, you said it was an open question. I think there needs to be some kind of vision, like Commissioner Keller laid out, as to how that garage space could evolve too. Because that's an awful lot of space. And if there's continuing to be a question mark going forward, I think that would just raise more concerns as you go forward with the process here. So I would implore you to use the comments that Commissioner Keller made in terms of that parking space and how it could evolve as a jumping-off point to present more of a vision as to how it can evolve. Thank you.
Okay. I think that my, I have a couple of concerns. And one is the interaction with the street. I appreciate the wide sidewalks. But as people have been saying, as fellow commissioners have been saying, how is this engaging people walking by? And I think that the space, rather than trying to bring people up to the second-floor space, I would like to see more, some kind of, I don't know whether you, previously we asked for more public space. Maybe there's a pocket park that bumps in on the ground-floor level. Like to see something more that interacts with, actually with the street. I think the mix of uses in terms of the balance between commercial space and residential units is fine, because we are seeing that commercial spaces are going away. But there needs to be some kind of community use or public use or public access, whether it is, you know, the gallery space or a pocket park, or maybe it's service uses that will serve the family-friendly units, like childcare spaces or something like that that could go in those. But I think that the amount of space dedicated to that is probably fine. And maybe we'll get more as the cars go away. In terms of bonus points for community benefits, I would actually love to see the rest of the bonus points be affordable housing, considering how little affordable housing we have here. One of this, I'm finding this building, I appreciate that you're trying to use rich materials in it, but I agree with Commissioner Guerrero that it really feels heavy, it feels massive. I would like to see it lightened up somehow with maybe not using the dark brick, using something else. Maybe not so much of the dark in the windows. Something that lightens it up and makes it feel less massive, makes it elevate a little bit, that would be really nice. More greening of it. The green wall on the north side sounds nice, but maybe something green on the ground-floor level and going up the building and other places as well. We're getting more and more paving, we're getting more and more buildings, we're getting more and more massive, impervious surfaces. So anything that greens it up would be a real benefit for people living here, for the air quality and for all that. I'm also concerned that the way that the courtyard is, I know it's facing south to maximize the sun, but still with seven floors above the courtyard level, it's going to be shaded a huge amount of the time. And I'm also concerned about the wind. You get some venturi effect coming in with that little narrow, the narrower entrance and the bigger space behind. And I'm afraid that that space isn't going to be very usable. Would like to see some design consideration to how the units on that level interact with the courtyard, because right now it's like there's, the whole space for the community use for the whole building is opening up onto people's houses, you know, people's frontages all the way around. So that certainly needs to be worked out a little bit more. The renderings, I realize it's early, early, early stages, but the renderings of the uses in the courtyards, I think there needs to be a lot of thought if we do have family-friendly units, that there are places for families to be hanging out and for kids to be playing and things that are showing that there are amenities for all of the residents. It really looks sort of like a singles apartment complex right up there with the lounges and the fire pits and things, which are good. But we need some more variety and some more thought to how families can use the space, because we want people to be able to live there comfortably with their kids. So back in terms of the community benefits or the bonus points, I think working with the city to complete the 20-foot-wide bike path. I think the path is a good thing, the pedestrian and bike path is a good thing to have there. Looking at the, both at the north face of your building, but also contributing or, you know, working out how to make that path actually happen, this 20-foot-wide affordable housing I mentioned. Greening, I'd love to see more expression of sustainable elements, whether it's solar, whether it's passive heating and cooling, whether it's greening with plants, just energy efficiency. I'd like to know more about how that building is going to become an example of a good, sustainable building that'll be a good, you know, energy efficient and a contribution to the climate for the next 75 to 100 years. And, you know, along with the greening, the streets being shown without a lot of planting, it'd be really nice to see some kind of more green. We're looking at a, we're looking at an intersection that has a lot of vehicle traffic. So things that could be done that separate the people from the cars a little bit, that, you know, provide some kind of a green, pleasant screen so that people would actually be able to sit there and have a conversation rather than sitting next to cars whizzing by and backing up and idling in front of their lunch. That would be great. And I appreciate the articulation and the stepping back and that kind of thing. But I do think that the building really does need to be lightened up a little bit to be, just to feel less mad. It feels more like Brooklyn than Emeryville to me right now, is what it does. Anyway, those are my comments. Do you have any other, any other questions? Any other, need any more direction? Got some conflicting directions, but you need some more.
I'm somewhat relieved, because, you know, the greeting last time was not positive. But I definitely feel better about at least the directions going in a more positive direction, at least. And all your comments, community is probably of all the comments here, it's a common statement, it's all about the community. So we'll definitely take that to note and work on these comments for the next round.
Okay.
I want to thank you again for having us. And we look forward, we're going to take all the comments from both meetings, other community meetings we've had, all our work with Charlie and Maru, and put together the best package we can and see you in the next month or two, hopefully. And there was one point I wanted to make, because this came up. The state fire marshal is now viewing a rooftop deck as an occupied floor. So if you're trying to build what we call a type 1B building, which is what this is, you cannot do eighth floor, you can't add a rooftop deck to it, because it turns into a high-rise at that point and it becomes a type 1 building. This is a fairly new ruling that came out about six months ago, Dave, right? So that's one of the reasons why you don't see the rooftop deck any longer, so. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's all of our agenda items. Are there any commissioner comments?
I kind of have a question for the planning director. Reading in the last item on here under the sidewalk design guidelines, and it says, "Christie Avenue frontage must comply with provisions for sidewalks 'green streets', which require 15-foot sidewalks." Is that for the whole length of Christie Avenue, or is that just for the area of this development? And let me add, the reason I'm asking is I'm seeing the park across the street. And from what I'm able to measure, those sidewalks are six, eight foot at the most. And I can't figure out why our own park isn't meeting Grease Green Street guidelines, if that's what we have. But those sidewalks over there are very skinny. And I'm kind of concerned about that.
Well, that should have been addressed when you approved the FDP for the park, which was several years ago.
Well, the plans show what looks like a fairly wide sidewalks. But the plans I have that we work from now, I couldn't vote on that item. So, but the plans I've looked through don't tell us how wide the street, the sidewalks are. But the image shows that they're pretty wide. But they're nothing to the narrowness that they are. So if that's something we could look into, I greatly appreciate that.
Yeah, we'll have to look into it and get back to you.
Yeah, because they're like, they're not even eight feet, those sidewalks. And probably just the ones along the street, not the paths within the park.
You're talking about the new sidewalks on the new.
Yeah, they poured the ones north of the bisecting pathway, they've poured those north ones. The south one is still old, and it's a lot wider than what they've already poured.
Okay, we will check into that and get back to you.
All right, thanks.
I just want to say farewell to Commissioner King.
And thank you for your service. I've always been, I'm sorry to interrupt. No, I just see you've always been very cognizant of appreciating the client, the people as they come up and the staff and everything. So I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, it's okay. You spent more time with him on the commission. And my time with you was short, but I've learned a lot from you, so thank you.
Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you. If I could just say a word, I just want to thank everybody on the dais. It's been a pleasure serving with you, serving this community. For those folks of you who are in the gallery and join us live on Community TV, if we should choose to, the compensation allows us to serve on this community, on this board, allows us to maybe to go out for a nice dinner once a month. So we certainly don't do it for the pay, if we choose to receive it. So for the folks that are here, we really do care a great deal about this community. That's why we serve on this board and this commission. And I found that to be the case. And I wouldn't have served three years if I didn't see that commitment every time I came to the meeting. I'm just sad that I had to leave this board, because I just have to do a lot of travel for work. And it's making it really difficult to continue to serve in this community. But given what I've seen, especially with the folks here, as well as the commissioner who could make it today, it's in good hands, it's in great hands. And that's not just including the folks on this dais, but also the city staff that supports us. They work incredibly hard. And though they earn what I hope to be, is a livable salary in compensation, they certainly go above and beyond in making sure that not only we have all the information to make the right decisions, I can see that how committed they are to this community. I couldn't thank them enough for doing so, so forth. For me, thank you so much for supporting me and serving this community. And I wish you, all of you, all the best. Do good work going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Sam. That's it. We'll adjourn the meeting.